Better write that one down. Or I'll start soon.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'd like to ask Pastor Chad Prigg to come up from Fellowship Baptist Church. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And this is about more people I've ever prayed for, bigger than my church, all right? It's all these people here today. Let's have a word of prayer together. Father in heaven, thank you tonight that we can gather in this fashion. Thank you for these men and women that have come with concerns and ideas. And Father, we pray that above all earthly ideas, that heavenly ideas would prevail. Lord, we live in a society where there are many broken lives. And thank you that the Lord Jesus is the one who can provide shalom, wholeness, to people. And I pray, Father, that the policies and the ideas that are lobbied back and forth tonight would go to furthering your glory and helping people restore their lives and bring a relationship of them to you. And we'll thank you for that. So bless this meeting. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
All right. I'll call the council meeting of August 19th to order. It is 7:11. Just to tell Mr. Lampy, sorry. You can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Oh, sorry. Oh, let's do that first. Roll call, I'm sorry. Had a long day.
Davis, Lampy.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Barts.
Here.
Blankey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Arnett.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Mildenhauer.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Up next, we have council meeting minutes from August 5th.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, motion by Berg.
Second.
Second by Blankey. Okay. Most fair to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. If up to three minutes, please state your name and address at the podium.
Katie Vander Linden.
Hello. I'm Katie Vander Linden, N-8071 High Road in Watertown, Wisconsin. Who is responsible for the health of those who live in Watertown? A simple Google search will answer that the Health Department is, at least according to the US government, state government, and local government. The health of Watertown residents is the responsibility of the government and all of us, and now some are stepping up. And this common council is putting up a wall, saying the health of our most vulnerable in the midst of a weather crisis is really not their concern. Now, I attended the blessing of a baby box at the fire station. I see lots of the fire department is here with us today. And it is so grateful that we have a community that sees the value in saving the life of a child, an infant, an unexpected miracle, and a gift. As former Mayor Emily McFarland said, this community was willing to cut a hole in the side of a multimillion-dollar building for the possibility of saving just one life. Just one. It's not a guarantee, it's a possibility. It may never, ever be used, but it should be there just in case. So it's interesting that that baby is being saved by the government. But that's not your job, I guess. The box resides solely on government property, and so government is responsible for the most vulnerable among us. Yet, when building Welcoming Watertown steps forward, offering the same care to the most vulnerable in our world, you say, there's no room. We can't provide that. Now, really? You have people who inspect and make sure that my water is safe. You have codes that make sure that my shed doesn't fall down and that other electrical and plumbing things should be okay in my own house, simply for me, or for families, or for new buildings, or for existing buildings. So the health and safety is your job. But what about for the unhoused? Building a Welcoming Watertown isn't asking you to house the unhoused. They are asking you to provide one space that won't cost you a dime and allow us to come in and make sure that those coldest nights, those sub-zero temps, we have no one die, as we did last year, to people. Government spaces are available during the day. You see the value. Libraries, senior center, those are actual places in the government that allow for people to stay, even if they've been kicked out or not welcome to for. In the coldest days, they are welcome. But not at night. Not at night. Is that the three minutes?
That's three minutes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Francine Geis.
Hi, my name is Francine Geis. I'm here also about a warming shelter. And I just wanted to start about some of the costs that have been mentioned in this. And this is for the city of Watertown. First, there are no costs. We're not seeking any money for this project. We are only asking for the sporadic use of part of an unused portion of a city building in the downtown area to help provide the warming shelter on the warmest nights. We are not asking for renovations. We're not asking for costly improvements. By utilizing a building already in existence, the only real cost could potentially be a slightly increase in electricity and water, which really should be truly negligible with the amount of days that it would be in use. We're not seeking staff, equipment, or food. Volunteers from our organization will provide that. Liability was another issue that was mentioned. My question to you is, would it actually change? Does, when the school or the library rents out their facilities to other groups, does it increase their liability insurance? Last, and also, if it does, would you be willing to partner with us to help cover that extra, if it does? Lastly, I'd like to reassure you that there are zero plans to bring in unhoused from other cities into Watertown. A temporary shelter, only open on the coldest days of the night, is not something that will draw in other people. It's not. Now, I'd like to talk about a cost to the unhoused. This project has no charges for the unhoused. They will not need to hand over their social security or their disability checks, unlike to some organizations that work with the unhoused in the city. They will not need to join the church. They will not need to tithe. And while assistance may be given to those who are seeking to better, or to change their situation, they will also not have it forced upon them. I'd also like to talk about the costs to our local hospital for the unhoused. For Green Doors.org, the unhoused are often frequent users of ERs. On average, they visit the ER five times per year. The highest users may visit the ER weekly. The average homeless person costs hospital ERs between $18,500 and $44,400 per year. The unhoused average three nights per visit in the hospital, which can cost over $9,000. Eighty percent of ER visits made by people struggling with homelessness is for an illness that could have been treated with preventative care. And right now, Medicaid is being cut. How many more will be reliant upon the ER as their sole medical care? We already have hospitals in rural Wisconsin that are going out of business, closing. How many more hospitals will have to close? And what is the risk to our hospital here? I'm asking that we partner together. We can provide at least a minimum safety net for the city and its citizens. Please, let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Zarling.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Zarling. I live at 113 College Street here in Watertown. I originally came just to speak on the issue of the warming shelter and support of it, but I guess I figured, since I started speaking here 10 years ago about rail safety, that it's kind of a full-circle moment and opportunity in light of the second derailment in two years in Reeseville, in the same spot, to just ring the bell and remind everybody about that on the same Canadian Pacific line that we share with Reeseville, that there was a derailment here in Watertown that spilled oil on the ground in a residential neighborhood on November 8th, 2015. And in May of that year, I gave a 20-minute PowerPoint presentation to the current city council at the time, and Kenberg, actually, Mr. Berg was on the board at that time. And I explained the dangers of an oil train derailment, and that was ignored. And then, the derailment happened, and since then, still nothing has been done. And I think that part of the reason why nothing has been done is because nothing ignited, and there was no loss of life. I think that's also true in the two cases now of the Reeseville derailments. And I think it's careless, because the rail companies don't care about our safety. There's been no rail safety legislation passed in all these years. And so, we can't keep doing the same thing and expect a different result, that as long as there's no new rail safety legislation passed, then derailments will continue to happen, because trains have gotten longer and heavier. And there's also something called precision-scheduled railroading that makes rail workers have to work insane hours, and they're exhausted operating these heavy trains. And Mr. Arnett, I actually came to your house 10 years ago and knocked on your door to warn you, because you live in the blast zone, and you said something about that the chances of a derailment happening would be like a plane crashing, and the plane crashed. And so, just because rails are federally regulated doesn't mean we're powerless. This should be a sign to us that we need to stand up and demand more and better, that the safety of citizens where these hazardous trains are going through matters. So that's the rail safety place, piece that I wanted to say. And then, about the support of the warming shelters, this morning I read an article from the New York Times about a Reverend named Jonathan Barker, who he's running on a, he left the church because the church ousted him because he supports AOC. And aside from the political aspect of that, he stands from a standpoint of what would Jesus do? And I feel like if we start out these meetings with a prayer, and we say the Pledge of Allegiance with liberty and justice for all, but we allow our unhoused to be not taken care of, then what does that all mean? So, that's probably about my three minutes. So I'll just go ahead and say that, please, support the people who need it the most. We should be reaching into our hearts with compassion and trying to help the people who need it the most. I love what Katie said about that there's more support for Safe Haven Box for a newborn, but that same support can't be had for our adult citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ben Adams.
I'm Ben Adams. I live on County Road X, N-7980. I, speaking in favor of the warming shelter, I just wanted to share something that happened yesterday. I was at a friend's house, John Heffarth, lives up on north side of town. He used to be a maintenance man at the hospital, and he shared with me the fact that on some of the coldest nights, he worked the night shift. On some of those cold nights, there would be people coming into the ER, and there would be a little, kind of almost like a little dance going on. They would have to feign some kind of illness, or some kind of twisted ankle, or something to get out of the elements to be able to be treated at the ER. And the ER staff, without actually admitting them to a bed, would allow them to be on a couch, or sit down, relax, maybe have a little snack, something to get out of the horrible elements. With the warming shelter, we can bring clarity to all this, so the police lobby will no longer have to be a place where people stay. We'll activate a team of volunteers. We'll get the warming shelter going for that night. We'll provide a safe place. We'll provide a place for them to sleep, and maybe a little food brought in. But if it's in a city facility, that would certainly be advantageous. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Dr. Chris Ross.
My name is the Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross. I live at 432 West Clover Lane in Cottages Grove, but I serve here in Watertown as pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am part of the local group known as Building a Welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. We continue to speak to the need for a community overnight warming shelter, so that we have a chance to reduce the number of those at risk of freezing to death during the upcoming winter. We still believe that if anyone in our community finds themselves in danger of freezing to death, indeed, that's on all of us. A proposal for a community overnight warming shelter, based on a public-private partnership, has been submitted. Although we have been grateful for the time and input given by various city officials, we have grown weary of excuses that don't make much sense to us. Excuses like what might be planned for currently unused spaces if the city chooses to spend money for potential renovations. People's deaths last winter are already a reality to address now. Our proposal would actually cost the city very little. Are people's lives worth a possible increase in liability insurance? Can Watertown not serve as the innovating example for other communities to follow? What will it take for we, as a community, to see freezing, people freezing to death as an emergency in itself? And then prioritize our choices to help save lives of those here in Watertown, that, yes, are among the people you all have pledged to serve? And so, because of our roots as a faith-based group, and because so many of you share a claim to the same source of scripture that so many of us do, we would like to continue to remind all of us of that shared scriptural wisdom we apparently have so much trouble hearing. Acts, Chapter 9, verse 36 says, "Now in Joppa there was a disciple whose name was Tabitha, which in Greek is dorcas. She was devoted to good works and acts of charity." Acts, Chapter 10, verse 34 says, "Then Peter began to speak to them, 'I truly understand that God shows no partiality; but in every nation, anyone who fears him and does what is right is acceptable to him.'" Acts, Chapter 20, verse 35 says, "In all this I have given you an example, that by such work we must support the weak, remembering the words of the Lord Jesus, for he himself said, 'It is more blessed to give than to receive.'" Acts, Chapter 24, 17 says, "Now after some years I came to bring alms to my nation and to offer sacrifices." Romans, Chapter 12, verse 13 says, "Contribute to the needs of the saints; extend hospitality to strangers." Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Monica Burkert-Brist.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance to speak to you briefly tonight in support of a public-private partnership for a warming shelter to serve as a safe public space overnight during severe weather events. My name is Reverend Monica Burkert-Brist. I'm an Episcopal priest, and I'm the pastor of St. Paul's Episcopal Church here in Watertown. I am located in the downtown, and I am acutely aware of people who have no safe place to be during bad weather events. I want to start out by praising the efforts of the city staff, which has led to the emergency plan that you'll be considering tonight. It is excellent, but it does not go far enough. And that is why I and many other members of your community are here to ask you to amend it, to enable a safe city space to be available on nights when there is severe weather, whether or not there is a power outage. If we don't make that change, there will be a repeat, undoubtedly, of the two deaths and one near miss we had on our streets this past winter. Today, I want to address a specific question, which is, why don't the churches just take care of this problem themselves? And what I will tell you is that I believe, briefly, as a pastor myself and a member of a faith community, there are three reasons, and they all demonstrate why the current options in our community fail to meet the need. First, church buildings and programs are a barrier for many people who are in dire circumstances. Many are afraid to approach churches, some because of fear due to prior abuse, some because of fear they will be asked to pay for services or make mandatory contributions, some because they have fear of being forced to join or undergo religious education. All existing programs in our community present one or more of these barriers. Our proposal presents none. Second, unlike most of our public buildings, the church buildings in the downtown, with few exceptions, do not have appropriate space and facilities. Those few that do have expressed no interest in solving this problem or partnering with it. Third, shifting, and this, in my opinion, is perhaps one of the most important, as a former person who served in government before becoming a minister, shifting the responsibility of public safety and security for everyone on city streets from itself to community groups is a shameful abdication of the local government's responsibility to provide safe places for anyone who is in its jurisdiction at any time. In the first six months of 2025, the existing hotel-one-night voucher program, which is clearly inadequate based upon experience this past winter, gave out 49 vouchers. Forty-nine vouchers in six months. Fifteen of those recipients were families with children. Fifteen families with children who were on our streets with no safe place to go overnight this past winter. Our proposals before you now, Matthew 25 tells us what you do for the least of those, you do for me, for Jesus, and we're all going to answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Schmidt.
It's actually great to address this problem. Last winter, I helped many people stranded in our city during inclement weather. I sent people out in vehicles looking for people who were in the cold. I helped over 50 people during the winter who needed emergency help at no cost. I work with police and the human services. I tried very hard to find the lady who died. We actually looked for her for two nights, but we couldn't find her. And we did rescue one woman in those two nights, who would have died, and helped her. I'm working with a coalition of local churches and our nonprofit to actually get a place in Watertown, a warming shelter, before winter. I'm working with several very good church leaders. I'm putting together an emergency inclement weather fund with my ministry adoration abode, and going to work with local hotels to help as well, so that no one is staying outside in life-threatening weather. On most very cold nights, I find possibly three to five people who need help, and we are out there when the weather is very cold, our volunteers. All this effort will be of no cost to those we help. We will offer food, provide cots, have a volunteer staff, put in place to stay with those who need overnight help. I'm waiting on two very good locations and buildings in Watertown to see if they will give the green light. It will be a multi-pronged approach, so that we help the most vulnerable. I thank the city council, Watertown PD, and Human Services of Jefferson and Dodge County, who continue to help me find the most vulnerable people. In one given year, we're helping three to 400 homeless families, women and men. Also, helping them in, going to rehab, work with the hospital, and work with Dodge and Jefferson County Human Services. We also have a food pantry that helps 2,000 people a month, and two buildings in town helping homeless men. I think, finally, we have, we will put together an emergency phone number to call and mobilize volunteers to actually go out and look for those vulnerable people, as many times they're afraid to ask for help, and they're combating alcohol and drug and mental health problems. I feel the church is the best avenue in Watertown to help the homeless, and that's been successful at a 90% success rate across the country. I think hogtying the city in doing this, and even speaking in the paper against our council is a bad approach. They've always worked with me on helping people in town. Jesus said, "Help the least of these. This is what we will do." Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Autry.
My name is Leslie Autry. I live here in the downtown area. I have been a resident of Watertown since 2012, and I'm also here on behalf of the warming shelter. So like I said, I've been a citizen of Watertown since 2012. I'm here today unaffiliated and independent. I am not affiliated with any church. It is just me, concerned citizen of Watertown, who has lived here and has raised children. As a matter of fact, I've been homeless myself over the years. So I have passion for this, and I care about this. So I am here. I joined the building of Welcoming Watertown back in June, and as you know, winter is fast approaching. approaching. Those bitter harsh winters are real and they're out there. And too many of our citizens are being left out in the cold, and unfortunately, not a lot is being done about it. So we've come together to try to organize somewhere safe for our residents to go. And no, they are not all addicted or mental health. Maybe some of these people lost their homes due to inflation. You're finding lots of families who are working, living in their cars, trying to send their childrens to school. How, why? When we have the ability to provide for them, like was mentioned, the safe haven box, we're providing for a child that may not actually be here yet. But yet we have families cold and on the streets in our town. And a lot of the people, governments, officials like to say, "Watertown doesn't have homeless people. Walk around one night, please, and you tell me if Watertown has a homeless problem." Because when I was out one night just with some friends, stepped outside, I ran into one gentleman, and I won't use his name because I don't have his permission, but I talked to him. And I spoke with him and I let him know, I said, "You know what? There are people in this town that care about you and are fighting for a warm place for you to be." And he had tears in his eyes and hugged me, a stranger on the street. Because that is what we should do for our community. We should love and provide. It doesn't take religion, it takes human decency and compassion to care about our community. So I ask you please to take in consideration, and this would be little to no cost, we will provide it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Fritz, and I am the president of Building a Welcoming Watertown. I am here tonight again to urge you to support our proposal for a warming shelter. Some have raised a concern that the city doesn't have space, but your own emergency management plan already designates the senior center as a place of refuge during emergencies involving citywide power outages. Our strongest recommendation is that you simply extend the availability of that shelter to allow for an overnight warming shelter even without power outages, even without extended multiple-night weather emergencies. This would use the system that already exists in a more proactive and humane way. The downstairs of this building is also an excellent option. We have heard there are discussions about repurposing that area in the future, but for now that space is available and probably will be throughout the upcoming winter. Cold will not wait, and neither can our neighbors without homes. Others have said they can't find another city using exactly this kind of public-private partnership. We see that as an opportunity. Watertown can take the lead. We could be a community that tries something new, and in doing so sets an example for others. And importantly, because we are offering to provide the staffing and the supplies, the cost to the city is negligible. This is not a burden, it's a partnership. Finally, I want to share a recent conversation I had with a community organizer who has worked closely with the governor's office. She was recently tasked with compiling a statewide map of shelters, and she told me Watertown is the only blank spot on her map. We were the only part of the state where she couldn't find anything. Is that really who we want to be? The city that does less than the bare minimum to protect our most vulnerable citizens? Our recommendations are affordable, practical, and life-saving. We urge you to amend the emergency management plan in front of you tonight to allow for opening an overnight warming shelter for severe weather lasting a single night, rather than making that shelter contingent upon power outages and multi-day weather events. But if not, you also have a copy of our backup plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Georgia Proll-Iry. I am in the third district on 402 Wildflower Lane, and Ken is my, my alderman. Thank you. I am here, I have the honor tonight to speak for the House of Peace, who can't be present tonight. So, hello. Our name is Sue and John Trepti. Our address is eight-ten South Seventh Street. I come to you as the founder and director of the House of Peace and a member of Building a Welcoming Watertown. I am coming before you to realize water is, Watertown is in a crisis. The crisis is poverty, housing, and warming shelter. Nine years ago, John and I saw our county lost resources for the homeless and abused women and children. We decided to start a grassroots effort to help one family at a time. We brought a board together and became a nonprofit. House of Peace has rehoused one hundred and ninety-eight families in nine years. Do you realize Watertown supports House of Peace? The children are our future. I ask you, what if a child had frozen to death in a car or on the streets? What would, what are we teaching our children? What are they hearing from our city leaders? Do they count? They are marginalized and they are afraid. As community leaders, we must take the next step to help humanity. Watertown is a poor farming community. Over sixty-five percent of our student body receive free and reduced lunch. Last year, we had thirty-five homeless families with children in our school system. I implore you to open a public space before it is too late. Everyone is one catastrophe away from being homeless. The prison inmates have it better than the homeless in Watertown. Let's remember, you are elected officials and your positions can change. We all want the best for our community, for humanity. Some city leaders determined that the police station, the new firehouse, and the senior center cannot be used for a safe shelter. This is shameful. Why? My taxes paid for that. Yes, it is purposeful. Trust your community members to volunteer. We have everyone's best interest at heart, from the most conservative to the most liberal. Building a welcoming Watertown is a small group of people. Many of us are strong Christians believing in God, who are choosing to pursue this due to our belief in our Christian obligations to help others. I understand that some of you do not want to work with us. This is not a topic of which side to choose. It's a fact to help humanity. If we can give them a bed, a meal, it might change their life. Just think how a warming shelter might change someone's life, and in time, they could be a productive member of community. Is that it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jude Christensen. My pronouns are she and her. I am coming tonight to speak about advocating for a warming shelter, actually for a shelter that would assist people with severe weather. Pardon me, my voice isn't up to par tonight necessarily. Who is at risk for eviction and homelessness? I have been in Watertown for twenty years, the last four of which I've been president of the board for Crossroads of Watertown Rental Assistance. Previously, we were Crossroads House of Watertown. What would you do if you were a single mother recently laid off from your good job of eleven years? You get child support, it's not consistent. You get unemployment insurance, but it's not enough to cover rent for your apartment. This could be your daughter, your next-door neighbor, or someone in your community. Crossroads of Watertown Rental Assistance helped someone in that very situation recently. That person, that family was at risk for eviction and possible homelessness. Crossroads is an all-volunteer nonprofit that serves the residents of Watertown Unified School District area. It was established in the year 2000 with a combination of church people and community members that work together toward a common goal of preventing eviction and homelessness for families and individuals who experience temporary insufficient rental housing income. The numbers of people in this situation has really increased. From 2023 to 2024, we have more than doubled the people that we serve. In 2023, we assisted thirty-four households to include ninety-seven people with forty-six adults and fifty-one children. In 2024, that number we served more than doubled. We gave grants to seventy-seven households consisting of two hundred twenty-three people, including ninety-eight adults and one hundred twenty-five children. Add to that the rising costs of rental units and general costs of food, clothing, school. Those evicted face moving into less desirable spaces and possibly changes in school or work for family members. The minimum wage and cost of living increases in wages haven't kept up. The cost of rent in the area average, it's gone up. I don't know that I necessarily need to go through all of that. This spring, we helped a young couple with one child, and they were expecting another. There was good income in the young family, and they were figuring it out. They were staying in a van though, because they had gotten ill due to mold in their apartment. The illness caused one parent to miss work, and they needed to get into a new apartment. Another family we ra, we helped, there was a single grandmother raising two grandchildren, and they faced eviction because the two little ones got sick in their school, and so the parent missed more than a month's work. I urge you, I gentle you, I really appreciate the work that you do, and I would really encourage you to work toward a warming and cooling shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Margarita Haas, seven oh six Crestview Drive here in Watertown. I am here in support of the city's existing plan and amendment for a homeless warming shelter and an opposition of a public-private partnership with Building a Welcoming Watertown and their shelter proposal. Now, I believe in limited government, just as the forefathers of this great nation intended, given their experience living under previous tyranny. Because the bigger government, the bigger the government, the more the regulations resulting in less individual liberty. Public-private partnerships in many cases result in very private decisions being made regarding how taxpayer funds are allocated. As we've seen nationally, government funds often end up going toward additional surprise programs or expenses that the citizens either never agreed to or vehemently oppose. I am for being charitable. In fact, I attended churches in my childhood that housed the homeless, in the sanctuary even, and these were small churches during winter months with the pastor and congregants using their own limited personal resources to feed and clothe them. I personally support the city's current warming shelters plan and recent amendment, as I said earlier, as it stands today. Not as a government mandate or obligation akin to socialist or communist countries that take a parental role over their citizens, but we as individuals get to decide if we wish to participate in this type of charity. I'm also thankful to have recently learned that we have several shelters in town that are already operating, have been for decades, some entirely on donations without government assistance. And as an aside, it's worth acknowledging that just because shelters are available doesn't mean everyone will necessarily go. Some people choose not to, and I cannot imagine if you're freezing to death that you would opt to not go into a warm place just because you feel funny about the place. Thankfully, Wisconsin, according to HUD, has one of the lowest populations of homeless in the nation. Thank God for that. In closing, I just want to make a suggestion to the city that perhaps if you go through with this current shelter that the city is putting forward, not in partnership with Building a Welcoming Watertown, that you would put signs up just to let people know in case they don't have internet, to direct them to the shelter. And I'd like to add a little tidbit here, and this is very personal, I'm going to be very candid here. Building a welcoming Watertown was started, according to an article written by Dr. Ross back in 2024, in response to the US white Christian nationalists who showed up to protest drag queens performing in front of children at the pride parade. So I just want to let people know in case they didn't understand that these are, this is the organization that is pushing and trying to coerce the public to partner with them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. All right. Mr. Lampy? Sorry.
Yeah, so if you'd entertain a organizational motion, Mayor, I would like to actually move resolutions eleven A, eleven D, and eleven C up ahead of item eight on the agenda, which would probably allow most of the folks in the audience to get on with their evening a little bit earlier.
You said A, C, and D?
I said A, D, and then C, and so those are...
In that order, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got motion by Lampy to go resolution A, D, C. I got a second by Berg. All those people say aye? Opposed? Move on to resolutions on A. Exhibit nine seven seven four, resolution to approve development agreement between City of Watertown, Wisconsin and Graemar LLC, sponsored by myself and the Pines Committee.
Motion to approve of the nine seven seven four.
Motion by Davis. Second by Lampy. Thought I saw Mr. Warren. Okay, any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lampy.
Just to provide a little bit of, of context here, this again provides additional housing to Watertown. As I believe it was stated during the last one, this is essentially a TIF, TID-free development that just essentially brings net new houses to Watertown and continues to expand the tax
Mr. Blankie.
I would just like to speak out on one thing. The developer Graemar reached out to me and others prior to the developers' agreement being passed or being presented to us. And one of the things they requested was to put sidewalk on one side of the street in this development. I agreed with that assessment. I was in the minority, but I did want to bring it up here because the neighboring development Hap Heights has sidewalk on one street. Then we got to this development and we cited the municipal code for it needing to have sidewalk on both sides of the street. I still would prefer that the developer be able to go with the one side of the street. I, I think it makes sense in this neighborhood, it's local streets, not highways. But along with that, I think that this board needs to examine our municipal ordinance on sidewalks, because in my opinion, it's ambiguous at best and leaves too much decision-making on city staff, and it's simply not clear for developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blankie. Mr. Rannet?
Just to make a comment that after having heard countless times that any housing development in the state of Wisconsin at this point in time requires TID money, requires taxpayer money to be put in the kitty in order for it to happen, I am shocked, shocked I tell you, to see that there is actually a housing development occurring that somehow doesn't need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rannet. Mr. Bergen?
Just for clarification, maybe one of our staff can, can do that for us, but single-family type of development typically is not in a TIF, and it typically is not subject to the benefits of a TIF, of my experience in the past.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berg. All right. Mr. Smith.
I've only been familiar with the minutes of the plan commission meeting where the issue of the sidewalks on one side versus both sides was discussed. I would second the... I would second the interest that Alderman Blankie has in reviewing that particular code section for future consideration. But my inquiry is to Alderman Blankie to inquire whether or not he has an interest in pursuing a modification of the developers' agreement to allow a modification of that agreement and require installation of the sidewalks on only one side of the street.
I do, however, the last time I spoke to the developer, and he's here right now, if you would like to come up and comment on it, he expressed an interest in getting the developers' agreement passed so that they can start work. Should we choose to amend it, we can do that at a future date, changing the sidewalk plan. But from my understanding, they, if this doesn't get approved soon, they're not going to be able to start work in this neighborhood prior to the winter.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Yes. We would be open to doing sidewalks on one side of the street. We do want to get this project moving. This project has been, it's taken longer to get started. We were hoping to have houses started this year already. It's likely they won't be started this year. We will likely start the development. Sidewalks are one of the last things that go in. We would like to move forward with this development. I would be open to discussing the option. But if it came one or the other, I would like to get moving with this project. Right now, we have money invested in this project that we can't do anything with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Good, Mr. Smith?
Obviously, time is of the essence, and I'm just wondering the best way to proceed because I would be more than happy to support an amendment to this developers' agreement at some future point in time where it is modified to require only sidewalks on one side of the street. But in light of the developers' interest to get this developers' agreement passed, I think a future modification or an effort to consider that at a future meeting would be probably the advisable way to go.
Okay, I can have a discussion with Mr. Warren in the future and bring it up to council again. Okay. All right.
Davis?
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts? Blankie?
Aye.
Smith? Arnett? Wetzel? Holdenauer?
Thank you. Next, we leave item D, Exhibit 9777, resolution to approve the warming and cooling center and shelter policy sponsored by Alder Davis from Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Ms. Davis?
I'll move for Exhibit 9777.
Okay. Motion by Davis?
Second.
Second by Smith. Any discussion? Mr. Lampy?
Thank you, Mayor. I found this policy when we took a look at it at Public Safety to be fairly broad, and the version that comes before us does allow for a variety of different triggers to open or close a warming shelter, which if you look carefully at the policy here, we have a preamble. We basically ensure that all members of the community have a safe space during extreme temperature conditions. Fantastic. That is a good opening statement. There's also definition under S1 of what the various types of shelters might be. So center, center with extended operational hours, and shelter. That's also in our policy that we're looking at passing tonight. The one other thing that's designated in the policy is locations. So in S1, we have two designated locations. We have the senior center and the public library as potential center or shelters. And then that's, from my understanding, about all that we have defined as a policy. Everything else is essentially left up to administrators, especially emergency management, in terms of being able to define when the shelter would be open. And I'm going to call the conditions that the shelter would be open, the triggers. So in concert with the policy that we're looking at tonight, there is a procedure that contains the actual triggers when the facility would be open. And the concern that I raised at Public Safety, and I do want to make sure that we have on the table tonight, is that by passing the policy as is, we're essentially passing all of the decisions on those triggers down to emergency management. So under the definition of the policy, we could have a shelter that only opens when it's 50 below. We could have a shelter that opens when it's 32 degrees. Those decisions are not being made by the council. So a hazard in passing the policy as it is is that we do not, we're basically taking away our decision about whether or not we want to decide what those triggers are. We're passing them on to some very qualified individuals in charge of our emergency management thing, but this is a conscious choice where we're taking the decision about whether to open a shelter out of the council's hands and putting it in others' hands.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lampy. Mr. Smith?
Alderman Lampy is basically referring to a typical and ongoing process of our city government, which is to delegate to responsible individuals the execution of the policies established by the council. This issue previously came to the Public Health Board on which both Alderman Davis and I sit. And at that point in time, we had both the four-page proposal by the petitioning party for this initiative and an existing 42-page policy, which has been in effect since June of 2024. It was never forwarded to and adopted by the city council. It was initiated by and drafted and implemented by executive order and has actually been used in the past determination to implement access to warming areas previously. What the Public Safety Committee has done has taken that 42-page policy and has distilled it for purposes of review and formal passage. Yet the remaining portion of that extensive document, which covers every conceivable area of implementation for safe shelters and warming shelters under appropriate circumstances, including everything from the volunteers that will be participating to the training of those individuals, and that basically operational policy will be in place. What we are going to be considering tonight is simply the implementing authority through this resolution and delegating to the emergency management personnel in our city to make the calls that will be underwritten by this initiative and by the policy, which is extremely comprehensive. And I think that the approach taken by the Public Safety Committee is extremely wise because every time some nuanced portion of that existing policy needs to be modified, it can be done by those to whom the authority for its implementation has been delegated and not come back to the council for every conceivable modification through formal amendment. So I think the approach taken by the Public Safety Committee, which I believe is completely consistent with what was the expressed desire of the Health Board, is exactly the wise approach to take. I think it is very, very reasonable, and I think that the totality of the guidelines are very, very comprehensive and will serve the city extremely well. And I completely trust those individuals to whom implementation authority has been delegated.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Davis?
I'd also draw everyone's attention to the excellent resolution that is in our packet, where it explains that the authority to make emergency decisions has already been delegated in our Watertown code to the Emergency Management Director pursuant to City of Watertown Code 56.4, "Emergency Government: The Duties and Responsibilities of the Emergency Management Director pursuant to 323.15 Wisconsin Statute shall be to develop and promulgate emergency management plans for the city." So we have already, through our code, delegated that responsibility to the Emergency Management Director. So what we have here tonight is a public-facing resource. So this is, you can almost think of it as an index of these excellent plans that are in place, emergency plans that have been created, and they're now being indexed in a public-facing document so that as a council, we endorse them, and then as a community, they can see the plans that have been created by the Emergency Management Director. So that's the purpose for bringing them here, that policy here tonight. And then you'll also notice, if you look at that chapter that's being introduced, you can anticipate that there will be additional policies similar to this one coming in the near future that the emergency management team has been working on, they're finalizing, and then we will bring those policies to you for approval at some point, and then they will also be included in this chapter.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I'll echo Alder Smith in highlighting, and Alder Davis on highlighting, the overall approach to this, which is to separate policy from administrative procedures. And I think in a matter like this, that is the right thing to do. There's far too many details that you don't want to bring forward into policy. You want to retain it in administrative procedures that are managed by the administration. That said, I've certainly been a part of conversations in the past where there's still one or two things that the governing body decides those are the critical issues that we actually still want to go ahead and reflect in policy. For me, I don't consider the triggering conditions in this instance to be one of those things that I think is necessary to bring forward into the policy. One of the things that I would say why I'd feel that way is because the policy calls for an annual review process. So if over time we feel, we as a governing body, feel that the wrong conditions are being used, then there is a process whereby we provide that input and can see those changes occur. So I am confident in, first of all, the initial approach of separating policy from detailed procedure, and I agree with not including the triggering conditions in the policy because of what's also included in the policy, that annual review process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett. Mr. Lampy?
I guess to sort of clean up that last piece, the policy as presented here offers annual review by city leadership but not by city council. So I think my first motion tonight is basically going to be to amend the policy to change the annual review from city leadership to city council.
You want to give control to the city council?
That, that was the motion.
Motion by Lampy, second by Berg. Okay. Discussion?
To clarify that, again, the phrase here is "will be conducted by city leadership," and I think the implication provided by Alder Arnett was that we, as the council, would have annual review. So I'm looking to crystallize that assumption to make sure that city council would have annual review of the policy.
Ms. Davis?
So just a reminder, this is going into our city policy manual that already exists, and that suggestion would be a departure from anything else that we do in our city policy. When a change is suggested to the policy, it then makes its way through to the council for approval. And so that is not something that we do with our City of Watertown policies, where we would review it on an annual basis. Remember, there are many of these emergency policies that we hope to add to this chapter very soon, and doing that annual review for each of those policies seems cumbersome and unnecessary by the council, I should say.
Mr. Berg?
For the last three months, I have heard a variety of people come in front of our council and make comments that we're meant to bring this issue to our attention and heighten some of our sensitivity to the fact that we have a problem in Watertown. And I appreciate, I know a lot of the people, I know their backgrounds, I know their heart is to help us address an issue that needs to be looked at more closely. Now, Alderman Smith made reference to, in essence, a policy that's been here, that has been inactively or for whatever reason not actively used like it could have been. And now we're going through this procedure of taking it to a committee. It went to this committee, and it's already here for action. So I think as much time as we heard on the topic of addressing this problem and for it to go to public safety and for it to come to us for action tonight is a little bit out of proportion as far as giving attention to the detail that actually would make this the best kind of legislation possible. I like the idea of us at some point reviewing and the triggers that are being referenced to, to understand, you know, what is being eventually put in place so that we know that it actually is from our view. We are the elected officials. We are the ones that our constituents look to as far as addressing the problems, making sure they are dealt in a proper way. And I like, in this case, for us to have some hands-on awareness and involvement, to have them give us the update and for us to see how it's actually acting in its implementation. So I want to be on that side. I'm encouraging you to vote for the amendment for all the right reasons and to be helpful and to be showing support for the fact that these, the definition that's right now is being left alone, needs to at some point be shown, and it should be shown to the council sooner or later so that we can have reassurance that we are dealing with this in the best possible light. I own some apartments on the corner of Second and Dodge, and across from there is a laundromat. And I was in there the last couple of weeks, and I found people sleeping in there at different times of the night. And so those are reminders to me that we have a problem. And I have apartments in Watertown, and I can't believe the number of people that are looking and calling me. I mean, I'm just one landlord trying to be helpful. But it's because the inventory in this town is so lacking, and landlords have the ability to ask pretty much anything they want because of the lack of choices. I want more development so there's more choices, whether it's a home or an apartment. Housing has to be expanded so that the ability of people to have choices is going to bring the rents and the prices more in line with where they should be. Right now, there's extortion, and there's greed, and there's all kinds of factors that are coming into play that are making housing unaffordable for a lot of people. And what they're doing is they are finding alternate ways of living in the short term, and we're going to continue to deal with that until we, as a city, improve the conditions for housing. And that'll take a couple of years at least. In the meantime, we have to be sensitive to the fact that we've had some tragedies in the last few years and do what we can to be proactive and more aggressive in trying to address a policy that's going to actually deal with the problem. This policy is a step in the right direction. It needs to be looked at critically for whether it's working, and I want them to come back to our council for the feedback.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berg. Mr. Blankie?
I guess I'm looking for a definition before we amend...
Before we amend what city leadership is, can we define what that is? Because currently, there is a, as we've noted, it says that the plan will be, the review of the plan will be conducted by city leadership. So is that the committee level? I guess I want to know what that is before we amend it to, say, common council.
I'm unsure why you're looking at me, because I am also unclear as to what that is. My attempt to put forward the amendment basically provided a very clear replacement for it, but I'm also struck by the ambiguity of city leadership.
Ms. Davis.
So as I understand the statement, as it's written in the policy right now, "Annual review of the Warming and Cooling Center Shelter Plan," which would be that 40-page document, which is developed by the Emergency Management Director under her authority by code, "will be conducted by city leadership." I think it's speaking to the team that's involved with that, as already outlined in here as well. So changing the motion to require the common council, who has not been trained in emergency management, has not been given that authority by the code, to review it, is a departure. And again, I'll keep in mind that many of these emergency plans will be coming. And so this is, in many ways, precedent-senting. If you were to change it to be, to say that the common council would review the plan, the 40-page document, annually, I think that is unnecessary and cumbersome, as I said before. And I would also point out that the necessity for the team to have this autonomy in creating changes is very important. Just within the last couple of weeks, the National Weather Service terminology has changed, and it's already been updated. They did that very quickly, and it's already taken care of. They need to have the autonomy, and the code has granted them that authority.
I'm going to take city leadership as its directors, people underneath from parks, fire, and health are the ones that can implement this plan in the first place. So if that answers your question, Mr. Blankey.
So thank you for the clarification. The second thing that I, and it's, I don't want to beat it to death, because Alder Davis, Arnett, and Smith have all mentioned not codifying the triggers. The whole point of having an emergency management plan and having an emergency management team is because you don't know what the emergency is going to be. If you start to codify every little item, you're not only, you're actually tying their hands, because there are situations that are going to happen that no one can anticipate. That's the whole definition of an emergency. We don't anticipate it. So by trying to codify that, rather than putting it into the judgment of our emergency management personnel, I think we'd be shortsighted.
Ms. Davis.
Let me just add one thing to that. In many ways, there are restraints that are already in place, because the Emergency Management Director and our Watertown code says that the plans will abide by the state emergency plans, and those definitions that are defined in state code. So even the term "emergency" is defined in state code. So there are boundaries there and responsibilities that they have to know what the terminology is and to know what the guidance is by state code.
Mr. Arnett.
Thank you. In my prior comments, what I was highlighting is that I, as an Alder person, in knowing there's an annual review of this, that gives me a process that I can plug into if I have an interest in understanding that. If I don't that particular year, then I don't need to plug myself into it. That was my intent with making that mention. In hearing others speak, what I actually thought I heard there was an interest in having a reporting on this to council, which is different than having council perform the review of, "Here's how it all went down, and here's what we need to do better, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And I think it's not uncommon in such a policy for there to be a reporting requirement. And I think that could be very easily amended in here if that is actually true of the interest, as compared to reassigning the responsibility of the review process from administration to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Mayor, I see that as very reasonable, and we have lots of annual reports. It would be very reasonable to have an annual report of all of the plans. Did you have to activate any of them? What did you learn? So I think that's a very reasonable thing to add.
We'll take a vote on the amendment.
What is the motion? Could you please read that?
It's to replace the phrase "city leadership," yes, in S2, the second paragraph, "by city leadership" with "by city council."
Okay. Okay, taking a vote, or anybody else want to discuss? Okay. All right, so a motion to change city leadership to city council. Lampy. Berg.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
No.
Smith.
No.
Arnett.
No.
Wetzel.
No.
Maldenhauer.
No.
Davis.
No.
Fails. Okay. That leaves us back to our original motion of passing Exhibit 9777. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Lampy.
Mayor, I believe Alder Arnett was kind of reading my mind on that one. I voted for the policy, as you probably know, in public safety through the minutes here. And I had some questions in terms of what became of the associated procedure. The two questions were generally, what are the mechanisms for public input into the procedure, making sure that the community's values were reflected in what went into the procedure? I did get an answer back on that from Emergency Management, which was very briefly, "Follow-up meetings with involved department heads can be scheduled, as this currently happens, when there are questions or concerns on a procedure by Alders or the public." That answer, I do want to come back to a little bit later, that I don't know if that's necessarily a complete answer to that one, but I also had the question for them, "How are the aggregated results of the procedure used reported back to the public, the council, et cetera?" And essentially, that was, you know, another positive answer on this one, which we can provide a report as requested. So to capitalize on Alder's, Arnett's comments, and what may be some support here, I would like to amend the policy to require an annual report on procedure developed under 64 to come back to the council.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Lampy, second by Berg, to require an annual report. Thinking like every August on this one?
Scriptive.
Okay. Okay, discussion on that new amendment. Wait a little bit. Mr. Barts.
Can we have some context of what this annual report would include?
That's difficult to describe without going into the bowels of the procedure. And the procedure does have, it abides by the definitions that are laid out in S1. So at a high level, I would expect uses of the center, uses of the center with extended operational hours, and so essentially a combination of aggregate statistics around the usage of those facilities, and the, basically, the supporting logs, if requested, as to when those facilities were actually opened, and the triggers for opening those facilities.
Okay. There's a chance it's not used very often, and there's a chance it could be used pretty frequently, too. Mr. Berg.
Again, there was some reference to a power outage type of example as a trigger in order to justify the need for this type of a warming shelter. And that's just an obvious. But I think the need to understand these triggers that are going to actually kick in the benefit of this type of shelter, and when it's going to be made available, is needed for us to have some update sooner than later. And I don't want it to go through a winter, and then to have an update when the winter's over and tell us how it went. I think we need to hear about it sooner than later.
May I ask a question, Mr. Berg? Are you asking what those triggers are? Is that what you're asking for?
I think the triggers are really up for discussion.
No, they're not. They're in the 40-page document.
I saw them.
And then you can request that document at any time by contacting the Emergency Management Director. So those are established by the Emergency Management Director and team, and she has the authority to do that by the Watertown code.
She has that authority to do that, but we are not going to be aware of that discretion and that method of triggering until, at some point, after the fact. So to get an update sooner than later would be to our benefit.
Can make sure you're aware that it's triggered for something, Mr. Berg, even an email. So if it's triggered for, we have power outage, we had it on June 21st. There was no power in town for a while, and we triggered it for a cooling center, because there was a heat advisory. So can make sure council's aware with an email that that's what you're looking for.
Mr. Lampy.
I guess I would like a vote on the motion for the annual report, just to see if there is general support for that on the council.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Arnett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Maldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Amendment passes. Okay. Okay, that leaves on the original. Mr. Lampy.
So following up on Alder Davis's piece around communication of the procedure, one of the, one of the issues I have with the current policy is in the communication of the plan. Currently, it is provided, per our policy, to the offices of Emergency Management. It's maintained and provided to all municipal departments. I think one of the issues that we have, because the plan is subject to potentially rapid change, is just, I would also like to see the addition of language in here so that upon change, upon ratification, upon whatever the proper term is for basically approving a new procedure, that that's essentially rapidly communicated to all applicable city So specifically, what I'm looking for is, if you look at the S2 Plan Section, second sentence, it says, "The plan will be provided to all municipal departments." I would just look for just another inclusion, because, again, serving on Park and Rec, I'm aware that it's our facility, our facility, that would potentially be impacted by a change in policy. So I would say within 24 hours of, again, and I could use some help here in terms of what it's called when the city approves a procedure, but within 24 hours of approval or the appropriate term.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Go ahead, Mr. Arnett.
Thank you.
Technically, I need a second on the motion.
Okay.
Read the motion, please.
So second, second sentence at the end of it, where it ends with "all municipal departments," I would add, "within 24 hours of approval."
Within 24 hours of approval. Okay. Motion by Lampy.
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Berg. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Arnett, go ahead.
Placement of the proposed amendment, to me, does not meet the intent, because that sentence is speaking to, frankly, the initial creation of the plan. Whereas I believe the intent was to address revisions, which are already addressed in the next paragraph in the second sentence, where it says, "The revision of the plan will be forwarded to all departments, organizations, and agencies assigned responsibilities in the plan."
So I believe I will accept the friendly amendment to move it from the second sentence of the first paragraph to the second sentence of the second paragraph.
Ms. Davis.
So I would not be in favor of putting a timeframe of 24 hours on our staff and our Emergency Management Director, who is dealing with real-life emergencies. And they need the ability to make judgment calls, to decide how to triage the responsibilities that they are tasked with. So I would not be in favor of adding a timeframe as to when they need to disseminate the changes. Keep in mind that a revision could be as simple as a reordering of the information or a spelling error.
I mean, this could be a tornado, train derailment, massive fire, I mean, it could be all kinds of things, not just bad weather, so. Mr. Lampy.
So this amendment is basically born of recent experience, where, again, sitting in Park and Rec, we had a brief discussion yesterday where we were unaware that the emergency plan had been changed recently and was changing again. So this is basically looking for positive communication, basically the intent of communicating to these departments, getting acknowledgement, if necessary, that a change in the plan has occurred, therefore, you as a department that is expected to support this plan need to be up, you know, need to be on your toes, and there is a change that you have to be aware of. So it's very much meant to be an alerting mechanism, that there are changes to the emergency plan that you, that you, this other department that's getting a copy are going to have to adapt to.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stevens. I think Lampy's motion. Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Arnett.
No.
Wetzel.
No.
Maldenhauer.
No.
Davis.
No.
Amendment fails. Five-four. Okay. Okay, we're back to Exhibit 9777. Mr. Lampy.
At this point, I do want to offer amendment that I think speaks to the heart of where the policy is. Again, I was struck originally that this sort of walked a crooked line between where we draw the line between policy and procedure. For example, the policy specifies specific facilities. It defines the shelter and designations, but it pushes the major part, and I think the, really, the elephant in the room, it pushes the definition of when the shelter would actually be open into the procedure itself. So my next amendment is going to be to bring the definition of the triggers for which we open the shelter into the policy.
Your motion to change the triggers.
I am not motioning to change the triggers. I am motioning to bring the triggers, as defined in the procedure, out of the procedure into the policy.
Okay, into the policy. Okay, we have a motion. Okay. Motion by Lampy, second by Berg. Discussion on that one.
So I understand Jonathan's intent is to help make our council or the public aware of this procedurally sooner than later, instead of, what's the benefit of it being made with the changes suggested? How is that going to enhance the likelihood of the operation of this program?
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead, Mr. Lampy.
So the intent of this is to essentially take the triggers, which we've noted are essentially something that we can set, can be changed, basically, without council input, and bring those into something that would be a minimal requirement by the council. For example, the council would then have the wherewithal to say, "You should open a center at at least so-and-so degrees," plus add your own criteria on top of that, if you needed that, for additional unforeseen circumstances. But it would essentially take the triggers away from the fully administrative part and bring them up to be a council decision.
Mr. Arnett.
Thank you. I think the individuals best placed and trained to make those kinds of decisions are the administrators who are already charged with that job. I believe we would have to get so detailed in the definition of the triggers to explore any possible sequence of events. Wind chills, how much snow fell in the last week, how much is on the ground right now, is there ice? Is the humidity, is it, what's what's your what's your cloud cover? I mean, there'd be so many circumstances that we would get bogged down in, as compared to leaving it to the judgment of the individual who has been trained to do that. And that's why I would not be in favor of bringing those into policy. Instead, going with how we described it, which is place them in the hands of those we've hired to do that job, and then hold them accountable by reporting to us about what they've done.
Mr. Maldenhauer?
I would have to agree with Mr. Arnett on that. I think that's 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 where it should be placed, in our management people, and we should stay out of that particular predicament.
Okay.
Lampy? Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
No.
Blanky?
No.
Smith?
No.
Arnett?
No.
Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Davis? Amendment fails.
Mr. Blanky?
Like to call the question on Exhibit ninety-seven-seven-seven.
Okay. Motion to call a question. Second by Wetzel.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
No.
Berg?
No.
Barts? Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Passes.
Six-three, okay. All right. Do again, Mr. Stevens.
Do it again?
Well, no, I think we're
I was calling the question, that's
Calling the questions now, wait, now we're going to vote on D nine-seven-seven-seven, pass six-three, so, okay. The original motion, I think, was by Lampy and Berg, if I'm correct. Oh, sorry, Davis, Davis Lampy, okay.
Okay, Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Berg?
No.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll go to C, Exhibit nine-seven-seven-six, resolution to not conform to expenditure restraint standards for the 2026 budget, sponsored by myself. Mr. Barts?
I have a continuing on with the discussion from earlier, I do have a couple of questions.
Should we get on the floor first?
Yeah, we have to have a motion on the floor. Ah, sorry.
Okay. Seven-seventy-six. Okay, motion by Blanky. Motion by Blanky, second by Lampy, okay. Mr. Barts, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We handed out earlier. We talked about in 2025, we had a we predicted a shortfall of shortfall of seven hundred forty-seven thousand from fund balance. Instead, we had an increase of six hundred fifty thousand. Do you have the, I was wondering if Mark had the current balance, fund balance amount?
The current unassigned fund balance, which is part of what feeds into this equation, as of twelve-thirty-one-twenty-four, is six million, six hundred eighty-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars.
Okay, and and at what percentage is that at? I mean, earlier we're at thirty-two or thirty-three percent?
That that is one, that's the numerator. The denominator is the 2024 expenditure budget, which was twenty million, four hundred and change, totaling a thirty-two-point-eight percent of unassigned fund balance to total expenditures.
Okay, an additional question I had, so for 2024, we received a expenditure restraint payment that came in this year, and that was for four hundred thirty-nine thousand?
That's correct.
And typically, the expenditure restraint payments that we receive are have been over four hundred thousand. They've been up in that neighborhood?
Yes, yeah, there's not a definition of the equation. It depends on all of the participating cities. The budget hasn't changed for twenty-plus years from the state, but for us, over the last number of years, it's been in the low four hundred thousand range of sorts. Four hundred and, I'll say, four fifteen to four forty.
And does that, does that four hundred thirty-nine thousand then go to a reserve account, or is that someplace that cannot be accessed by the city?
It's general fund shared revenue. So it it goes towards our general fund total.
It doesn't go directly into fund balance? It goes into a separate account?
Well, it it's one of our state sources of funding. We have a total of about four million dollars that come from intergovernment revenues, and that's part of what the state provides to us as part of what totals our revenues for general fund.
Okay, then, just a further question on fund balance here. If we were to reduce fund balance down to the neighborhood of twenty-five percent, what would do you have any idea what how much that would be? What amount would be available?
If we were to go from the thirty-two-eight to the twenty-five?
Yeah, closer to the, I know the ordinance says twenty to thirty percent, but if we we talked about reducing it down closer, at least at one time, to twenty-five percent.
Hold on one second.
Approximately one-point-six million dollars.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware. And I wanted to make a statement that says, I know we have many needs this year for the budgeting. I mean, it's usually the case every year, but I've been on finance committee the last four years. And I know in 2025, many of the requests were deferred to the twenty-six budget, and that's typical over a budgeting period. I am in support of having more police officers. I don't know what that number is, but any the any police officers that we could add to the mix there is a is a positive, I believe. But I also think there's room there to use some fund balance. Those are already taxpayer dollars that I figure, I feel that we should use before we decide to raise taxes. I furthermore wanted to talk about, the handout that was in the packet today also talks about what the maximum increase, just so everybody's aware of it. If we if we abandon expenditure restraint, right now, the maximum increase on your expenditure restraint is two-point-nine percent for the budget, right? And and again, that's existing calculations, and calculations might change as some of these numbers become more crystallized here in the in the coming weeks, days and weeks. Two-point-nine percent, so if we say we're not going to do expenditure restraint, then the council, then the finance committee is free to raise that to whatever number they want. Right now, it's capped at two-point-nine percent, or actually two-point-eight-eight percent. The, and then on top of that, we've also talked about the expenditure restraint payments. So expenditure restraint payments we get every year, and we've done it, I look back, I didn't go back very far, I went back to 2014. The city has followed expenditure restraint, at least I know, back to 2014. So every year, we've had an expenditure restraint payment, so. This year, we'll get, this year, we've got, we got four hundred thirty-nine thousand, next year, we'll get one, because we did that in 2025. So we're looking at not only raising taxes above two-point-nine percent, which us as aldermen will have to deal with with our constituents, then we're also looking at abandoning that future payment for expenditure restraint. So just wanted everybody to, I mean, for those reasons, I'm not in support of planning to abandon expenditure restraint.
Mr. Smith?
I I also have considerable concerns. But before I mention a few of them, I want to extend my appreciation to you and the work that you are already doing in pursuit of a balanced budget that is in the best interest of our community. There are some things we know right now. There are many things we do not make right now. To pass this resolution tonight would basically be the nuclear bomb in terms of moving forward with the budget. I am not suggesting that it may not be at the end of a careful analysis, a decision that we decide to make. But we will be making this decision with an awful lot of information that's crucial to us, totally unknown, and many things that are extraordinarily important for us to consider. We would be without that consideration prior to a vote, should we move forward and approve this resolution. There are a few things that we categorically do know if we pass the abandonment of expenditure restraint. First, we know that we will lose four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in the future, although that's based on this year, and the calculation for the next year is not exactly known, but an amount that is tremendously substantial, well over four hundred thousand, and the variation we cannot be absolutely sure of. The second thing we can be certain of is that budget years do not get easier. I don't know how many times I have heard people say, well, this is a really difficult budget year, but when things get easier, well, that just doesn't happen. This year is probably harder than last year, last year probably harder than the year before. And the notion that somehow the following year, we're going to be able to hop back on expenditure restraint with no difficulty whatsoever is a supposition that is, at this point in time, unsupported by known data. The third thing is that the premise that underlies this resolution is that we should use a tremendously large percentage of our fund balance, going from thirty-two percent to approximately twenty-five percent, would be to use one-point-six million dollars in support of ongoing expenses. Now, it is generally not a good idea to use fund balance, a non-recurring source of funding, for something that is going to be a recurring expense. The kinds of things that fund balance would be appropriately used for would be one-time expenses, pouring money into the improvements of our city streets that could supplement what we otherwise would be doing in any given budget year. So we know that that money will be gone. It will be gone in a manner that is going to be in furtherance of a continuing expense, and the money will be gone for use for one-time expenditures that would be a more proper use of the fund balance. Now, one thing I will say is that the presentation by our mayor this evening was extremely thoughtful and extremely helpful. It is filled with various options, various things that need to be examined carefully. He has suggested a multitude of potential cuts that a reasonable budget process should consider. He has presented a very credible litany of very important future needs for our city that need to be considered and prioritized against all other budget competing factors. But one thing that I found very interesting and very helpful is a question that the mayor put at the bottom of page sixteen, which is talking about the anticipated status of our fund balance being at twenty-five percent, and how that had dramatically increased over the last, the reference is, the context is, the last one year. But the progression is also present over many successive years. And the question is, why is our fund balance at thirty-two percent? And I've been thinking about something that I think is an area of needful consideration. I I think it's very important that our finance committee, through this budget process, look at every line item, look at every existing position, look at every requested needed position as we move forward into the future, and review them from the perspective of prioritization. And and a constraint such as the expenditure restraint program gives us increased motivation to seriously do that. Any financial effort, initiative, annual undertaking by any business is going to be looking at every area for possi, for purposes of review, where current expenditures are being made, where requested modifications for additions are being requested, and what it is that's within the context of affordability. And this is something that I think we need to take a look at, because I believe the reason why the fund balance has grown to the percentage that it is is found in the question, how do we budget? I do not believe that it is possible for our fund balance to have grown to thirty-two percent had we been budgeting in a manner that was consistent with wisely moving into the future. And let me make just one suggestion that I think underwrites why our fund balance is growing in an extraordinary manner. And 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 in, as I look at and as I have considered the other the other contributing factors and so forth, right now, in our general budget, which is the consequential budget as we consider expenditure restraint, about seventy-five percent of that budget is is made up of compensation, salaries, and benefits, seventy-five percent. How do we budget for personnel costs, compensation and benefits? We budget at one hundred percent. And the result of budgeting for a one hundred percent, when we have as many employees as we do, many of whom leave city employees, leave city employment, gaps develop in terms of the of whom leave city employees, leave city employment, gaps develop in terms of the absence and the fact that we're not paying them, I think it is tremendously important for us to actually calculate how much of our fund balance is the result of budgeting for 100% of personnel costs when in fact, we do not end up paying for 100% of the personnel costs. And if we find over the course of, let's say, 10 years, looking back, that we have budgeted at 100% of personnel costs, and at the end of each budget year, let's say somewhere in the 95, 96, 97% of those budgeted line items are actually paid, leaving the difference as a substantial contribution to our fund balance. If that is a pattern, then we ought to be asking ourselves, why are we budgeting at 100% if in fact, the pattern is so clearly seen year after year after year? What is the consequence of this? All right? Instead of budgeting at 100% and roughly 16 million of our $21 million budget is personnel-related costs, what if we budgeted at 97%? Because that's what our study shows is what we're actually going to spend. What will that mean in terms of money that we do not have to budget? Well, if those numbers are roughly accurate, that would be $480,000 that would not be budgeted, which is money that is calculated in the expenditure restraint formula. That $480,000 would be opened up as available funding for some of the prioritized new positions. What I'm saying is, we need to be creative. We need to look at things that are systemically underwriting problems that we need to at least study and say, is this something that would allow us to budget more intelligently? And I believe that we can find those areas. I believe we can stay on expenditure restraint. I believe we can add new prioritized positions. I believe there are some things we can probably do creative to enhance revenues and some that we can probably find that can help us cut some expenditures. But these are things that our finance committee should be doing, and we should not pull a notion that somehow the answer to our problems with no consequences down the road is just to, at a point in August, when we're not going to adopt our budget till November, is to say, we're going to abandon expenditure restraint. Now, I've been involved in city government for a lot of years. I don't think we have ever failed to participate in the expenditure restraint program. This would be an incredibly divergent step from the pattern of the past and something that at this point in time, I do not think is wise. So what I would like to do is to make a motion. It's a debatable motion, so I am not contributing to shutting off debate in any way. That's why I voted against the last motion to call the question, because I want to enhance the opportunity to continue this discussion. But I would like to make a motion to refer this resolution back to the finance committee where meaningful work can be done and we can explore the totality of options that can help us through this wilderness passage. And this, right now, is not, this being the resolution at hand, is not the way to go, at least not now.
Mr. Smith, that's a formal motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Smith?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion by Smith, second by Berg to move back to finance committee. Correct, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Lampy?
I'll offer some discussion. I generally agree with the move to move this back to finance. This is generally, I think, where we would have these discussions. On behalf of last year's finance committee, of which I believe that we do have four members here as well, I can tell you that we did try to move down to 25% of our target with the budget. That was in mind, and the citizens of Watertown benefited essentially by having a 0% Fund One increase in their taxes. So we were successful in basically zeroing out taxes last year by aiming for the 25%. The idea that we are essentially over-budgeting for 100% of personnel costs is intriguing, and actually, I would, that's one of those pockets of information that I wish I did have in front of me. So I would encourage the mayor, finance director, to provide us with additional information, guidance, if you will, from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities or elsewhere around our ability to budget at a percentage other than 100% of expected personnel costs. I will say, though, that in general, why I'm in favor of expenditure restraint, whether it's here or removing ourselves from expenditure restraint, whether it's here or whether it's elsewhere, is because the estimate that I received on June 19th, and this is the one that you provided, Mr. Stevens, you know, available dollars from 2026, Fund Zero, which did talk about a scenario where we remained in expenditure restraint, had us looking at a severe six-figure deficit if we also proceeded with another major program that we want to put in place for our employees this year, which is re-indexing to a new pay table. And so, League of Wisconsin Municipalities was kind enough to give us all, you know, this magazine, this thing, its workforce. There's a lot of articles in here about how do you attract, how do you retain a qualified workforce, which I believe the city has done an exceptional job of over the past few years. So when we talk about expenditure restraint and what we would get by essentially removing ourselves from it, a lot of that funding would go directly to re-indexing to a pay study that we basically already have external assurances for that reintroduces a better set of wages that's more applicable to the existing workforce and allows us to re-index people to that new pay table. That is one of the major benefits we would get by essentially moving out of expenditure restraint, being able to spend down the excessive funds that, once again, we do find ourselves in the care of, and actually allowing us to move forward with that re-indexing and a raise to employees without necessarily going back and cutting essential services and people. But what I would also like to ask for, and I guess my list of things to finance is getting long at this point, but if we could have an updated sort of initial point of view, because where we started with this June 19 estimate, which is basically like, if nothing else changes, if we stay in expense restraint, what sort of deficit do we look at with the latest numbers? I would love to have that as a baseline as we, I hope, as this motion succeeds and we take this back to finance, we actually have that as a baseline to understand what happens if we move out of expenditure restraint, what happens if we look at a modification where we delay pay increases, as it has been suggested, or some of the other scenarios that we're potentially looking at. But I feel, right now, I agree with Alder Smith that I do not have necessarily enough information to make a full judgment. I have a feeling, and that's not sufficient to pass a budget.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Watson, go ahead.
Question from Mr. Smith. This is going to go back to finance committee. Do you have a timeline when to get this back? How soon? How soon do you want an answer from them?
Well, I envision the finance committee's responsibility is to be a partner in the process of helping the mayor create an executive budget. I think the mayor proposed this so we could have more guidance and try to present to the finance and executive budget that would get us a significant way down the road. I think as finance, we just need to start our work earlier. I think we need to look at the variety of considerations that are important, many of which the mayor has highlighted. He needs feedback. We can probably make a number of decisions in advance, not necessarily this particular issue, but I think we can make dramatic progress as we look at some of the consequential issues that have to be resolved and do that at a time before the mayor is obligated to complete his executive budget. Now, I know that's turning the timeline of past years on its head, but this is an extraordinary year. All you have to do is read this PowerPoint presentation and you see what are almost intractable type issues that are, if not new, exacerbated this year. And to identify the kinds of things that can help us prioritize what is most important. We're not going to be able to say yes to everything, but first, we have to get the budget process accurate, and then we have to be working under the same framework as we move forward. Then, when the executive budget is done, we're going to be a lot more capable of making those final decisions that invariably are part of the budget process. But I believe that there is a very good possibility we'll be able to do substantially more in terms of the kind of prioritized spending that is important to the city, the kinds of things that Alderman Bartz mentioned, which was adding police officers to our city employ, the kinds of issues that Alderman Lampy highlighted in terms of the new pay plan and the importance of trying to implement that within the scope of fiscal responsibility, and the kinds of things that all of us are concerned about, which is to say, the taxpayer, where is the taxpayer in this whole equation? And if we just leave the taxpayer as the recipient of the final bill, whatever it turns out to be, we're not serving them well. We need to set limits, and that's one of the benefits of expenditure restraint, because it makes us do the types of evaluations that keep the taxpayers front and center throughout the entire budget process. And I know from having numerous conversations with our mayor, that's where his heart is. And we can do this together. I'm just saying we need to start diligently at the finance committee at an earlier point in time than the typical, here's the mayor's executive budget, have at it.
Mr. Renek, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, particular to the motion at hand of referring to the committee, I would like to say that I understand very clearly the care and concern that this mayor is investing in this budgeting process. And I very clearly also know the tremendous energy he's applying to the process to see where the issues are and what are the possibilities. And I furthermore appreciate that he is setting a pattern here by coming to council this evening, setting a pattern of consulting early and often with all of council on what is our most important decision that we make every year. However, with that in mind, in this particular case, I agree that this should go back to finance.
Mr. Berg?
A month ago, actually, the finance committee had this same discussion, and at that time, it was a two-to-two tie, basically, and we, and our mayor was going to make a decision of whether he wanted to go away from expenditure restraint or abide by it. And at that finance meeting, the decision was made not to take formal action in a way that would have given that direction, but to, it was sort of laid on the table and it wasn't acted on any further, but our mayor wanted then to get direction from our full council so that he could have better direction on working on his executive budget. That's why it's in front of us tonight, because he is trying to put that together. He's already shown us, and we've all given him kudos for the fact that he's done hard work, and he's shown examples of where there could be potential savings to help bridge the gap. And so I have no problem with it coming back to finance. I think we're going to get a similar type of vote when we do, but in the meantime, maybe we can look, be reminded again of some of these dollar amounts that are actually facing us in this particular budget for next year. It's showing in information given that we have allowance for estimated around $607,000 of expenditure, and we have already approved a contract with the police department, we've got one with the fire department, that if we do the same thing with them, we're going to have roughly $300,000 of new expenditure to take care of those salary increases on those two governing, or those two employee groups. We've got an 8.6% increase in health insurance, and that, I'm told by our, Mark Stevens is approaching something close to 300,000. So we've already got our amount right there, and those examples of hitting our cap. The only way we're going to stay within this program of expenditure restraint is to have reductions and/or fees and other kinds of revenue that can be brought forward to allow us to comply with. And I'm on board with staying with the expenditure restraint program. I do feel our mayor's in the best position of all of us to look at the budget critically and to look at all the areas where there could be plus and minus to allow, in his case, maybe some positions that he feels are needed at the expense of other cuts that would need to be put in place. But that's what a mayor does in an executive budget. So I think we're, we need, whether we, you know, we could act on it now and give him the direction, or we could take it back to finance, which I'm fine with. But I think he is trying to get direction so he can understand how much should he look at cutting versus doing things that would be more aggressive, maybe, and some of the things he may want to include in that budget for next year. But like I've mentioned, and like Alderman Smith has pointed out again, the importance of fund balance is to use it typically for a non-recurring type cost. And one of the things they want is an increase in salaries for non-union groups, and to put that in place is going to have a decent amount of expenditure that we need to somehow include at the expense of, again, expenditure, some kind of expenditure cuts in other parts of the budget. So there's nothing easy about this decision, but I'm aware of the task we have in front of us, and I do feel that there are things unique to this particular year that if we can get by it in some way with our mayor looking critically and us adopting to some degree or with some change, I think we can get past this year, and the increases for these employee groups are things that we have dealt with in this budget we're going to have for next year. But they will be okay then for a few years where we won't have that issue to deal with. So there's things unique to this budget that make it difficult, and I think if we get past it through some of our adjustments, which are being suggested by our council, finance and the mayor, we can get through the year and comply with getting our 440,000 in revenue that we get through the program.
Ms. Davis?
Just three quick comments. I'm in favor of sending this back to the finance committee as well. I'm not comfortable in supporting it tonight, even though in finance, I expressed a curiosity, and I was interested in entertaining a what-if if we were to choose not to go with expenditure restraint, but I can't support a resolution tonight because I'm not seeing the other side of the equation, which is the taxpayer that you were speaking to. When I expressed curiosity, I said, I would be interested if we could use fund balance and the increase to the taxpayer would be negligible. So I'm in favor of it going back to finance committee. And just a quick thought, I think, actually, running our last few budgets through AI would be really interesting, because given the right prompts, I do think that those answers could be determined and fairly quickly. So that was just a thought I had. I think that would be a great way to analyze a budget in a quick way.
Mr. Lampy?
There, again, it was mentioned at finance that those interested in looking at excluding ourselves from expenditure restraint, there were two of us there who spoke in favor of that. Alder Davis was one of the others who entertained that under certain conditions. I think we can actually accomplish both goals here in trying to determine I think we can actually accomplish both goals here in, in trying to determine if there's anyone else on the council who's not on finance who would actually entertain leaving expenditure restraint. I, as, I don't know if anybody here has spoken in favor of being curious about it or anything else, or I think we can actually go back to finance with that information is, so I, I guess I would invite anybody else who is potentially interested in looking at leaving expenditure restraint to make sure we know that, and that's valuable information for us back in finance if that is essentially a shut door.
So we can't take a vote, but everybody can speak for a couple of seconds, I guess, Mr. Lampy. I know how the finance feels, finance members. Mr. Smith.
Obviously, we all have a wealth of questions, and we don't have the information that is necessary to make an intelligent decision right now. But I, I just mentioned one approach that I thought might be the substantial type of rethinking of a budget process that could help us. The thought, and I just want to make a similar type of analogy to the use of our fund balance And this whole issue of expenditure restraint is a very difficult issue to finesse because it is something that not only controls expenditure, but it actually works against itself as it seeks to control expenditure by limiting the efficiency of a government that ends up with a fund balance, because the revenues are virtually excluded in the computation process. So you can't benefit from the efficiencies that you use unless you're going to say, okay, well, we're just going to go ahead and use our fund balance for purposes of underwriting, getting off of expenditure restraint because there's no other alternative. And in fact, there actually is another alternative, because if, for instance, we said our goal of using as one-time expenditures this fund balance or substantial part of it, let's say the 1.6 million that would take us from 32% down to 25%, suppose we wanted to do what I think a lot of the citizens in, in our community would like to see, which is pouring available money without blowing the tax rate into city streets. Well, the answer is you can't do it in a traditional way, but let's say we've been borrowing for capital projects, virtually 100% of capital projects for a number of years. And let's say we were going to borrow $4 million for capital projects this year. What we could do to put that 1.6 million dollars into street work, assuming we can finesse all the other issues within the expenditure restraint formula, is we could add 1.6 million to our borrowing because that's exempt from expenditure restraint, and then all we'd have to do is to ensure that the bonding instrument allows unlimited prepayment of that borrowing, because long-term debt is exempt from expenditure restraint. Long-term debt is defined as anything over a year. So we borrow an additional 1.6 million dollars, do all the street work, it doesn't count against expenditure restraint, and then we use the fund balance after one year to pay down the 1.6 million dollars, and all of a sudden, we have avoided the restrictions of expenditure restraint. We don't have continuing expenditures to have to wrestle with down the road, and we have a major contribution to city streets on a one-time expenditure basis. So there are a lot of things we can do that are creative if we're willing to explore them, and we can look at all the competing factors, and we can begin to set those priorities and make this come out, and I don't know who said it, but to make both of these things work. Stay on expenditure restraint and pursue a number of the priorities that with less, with a more traditional approach, we might say we can't do. But I think a lot of these things we can do. Keep the tax rate extremely stable, get the capital projects done, and meet the constraints of the expenditure restraint program.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Berg.
A while, a while back when we were looking at, at the expenditure restraint program, I did make a contact with the Department of Revenue, and they came back with information that, that I shared with our mayor and Alderman person Smith and, and a few others, and it did show that that is one area of where you can address a need, again, because it's non-recurring, and you can actually do it in, in compliance with the expenditure restraint program. That does have appeal. That will be one of the options we can obviously look at within our budget for next year. It, it doesn't obviously address some of the concerns that other people on this council have involving the issues that we still need to deal with on, on positions, on, on salaries, and other things that are viewed as priority that we're potentially not going to address because of that restraint.
Mr. Hernett.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor. The current motion on the floor is about referring this issue back to committee.
Okay. Anything on the motion?
Those, I believe, it was made by Smith and seconded by Berg.
Mr. Blankey.
I'll just say that I was ready to vote up or down on this resolution as it stood tonight. However, not sitting on finance and hearing several of the possible alternative solutions presented, I think it is in our best interest to refer this back to finance where they can do a deeper dive into some of these possible alternative solutions.
Mr. Mullenhauer.
I would agree with Mr. Blankey. Send it back to finance.
Okay. I believe Smith made that motion. Okay. Smith.
Aye.
Hernett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Amendment. Okay. Is passed.
I would entertain a motion to finish off the resolutions, because there's people in the audience here. If we could entertain a motion, make those three out of the way?
We have to vote on 9776.
I'm sorry.
Still.
Yeah, we just referred it back to finance.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. I don't think we need to do an up or down vote on it.
No.
Yeah, should be good.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Blankey.
I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda for the evening to take the remainder of the resolutions. Item 11 in order has appeared that we have not yet addressed.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Seconded by Mullenhauer. Thank you, Mr. Mullenhauer. Okay, we'll go to item B then. Exhibit 9775, resolution to approve RD Citywide Sign Grant Program.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We need to vote on the. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Sorry. B, exhibit 9775, resolution to approve RD Citywide Sign Grant Program and designate source of funding, sponsored by myself and the Finance Committee.
I move for adoption of exhibit 9775.
Okay, motion by Smith. Seconded by Bartz. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Stevens.
Smith.
Aye.
Hernett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Go on to E, exhibit 9778, resolution to adopt the City of Watertown 2025 to 2030 Parks and Open Spaces Plan, sponsored by Alderman Lampy from Park and Rec Commission. Mr. Lampy.
For exhibit 9778.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Lampy, seconded by Berg. Okay, any discussion on that? Mr. Lampy.
This shouldn't be the first time we've seen this at, at council. I believe that this came through already. There's questions or anything else that pops up on it. Happy to address those back at Park and Rec, and obviously we have a very qualified Park and Rec director who knows this thing inside and out. It's a five-year plan. Does contain a lot of things that we do want to do, but it also is going to highlight a few things that are going to come into our budget process, so I think I've mentioned those before.
Mr. Hernett.
Thank you. So I do appreciate that in the plan, there is a page speaking to recreational activities focused on the river. A little odd to me that it hardly mentioned fishing, which is probably the number-one activity. If you ask people in Watertown what they would want to use the river for, that's what it is. Prior experience, I believe what we can expect is the most common use of this document will be to justify adding more parks to the city. I heard from plenty of constituents, for now, we need to stop putting up new parks and put our resources into the existing ones. I have the concern, again, based on prior experience, I, I know what will happen, is this document going to get dragged out and say, well, it, it's approved here, we're adding, we're adding a park. And I just can't get on board in that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hernett. Mr. Mullenhauer.
My constituents also that we have a lot of nice parks already, and I think we should just kind of lay low on what we already have. Fix the ones we have.
Mr. Smith.
I think this is a remarkably well-done document. It is the continuation of our process of doing a Park and Open Space Plan update every five years. So for those who've been on the council for any period of time, this is something that basically has, is moving us forward from where we were five years ago. I thought it contained a lot of extremely helpful goals, and in terms of the concern I have, which is fiscal responsibility across the board, and while this document does suggest that there are some underserved areas of our community that don't have parks within a five-to-10-minute walk from their residence and so forth, there's a very interesting section of this document that compares us to the, how the City of Watertown is doing versus others within this national organization. I can't remember the name of it. But the point is, in terms of park acreage, we're way above the norm. In terms of the number of parks, we are way above the norm. On the issue of programming, we are way above the norm. So I don't see that there's going to be a lot of pressure building to add to areas where we're already doing well. My concern about our park system is that we are definitely on the grid comparison on staffing, for instance. We are way under norm in terms of huge amount of acreage, lots and lots of parks, and on a national average, understaffing for the anticipated needs for the personnel to maintain our system and the cost of maintaining. For instance, we have got lots of neighborhood parks, but you go through this excellent plan, and what do you find? The, the list of a large number of them that already need replacing. I mean, we are going to have expenditures that are going to be coming, and obviously that's going to be one more factor in the budget prioritization process. But the bottom line is, this is a very helpful and a very well-done document, and it is not just the underwriting of some kind of a blank check for spending on an untargeted basis. It gives us a very clear roadmap of where those priorities within the Park and Rec Department are, and those are the things that we need to pay legitimate attention to. But in terms of anticipating, I don't figure I'm going to be around here when the next request for a new park comes along. But also, keep in mind, it also highlights the, the provision of land dedication and payments in lieu of land dedication that would help us if the time ever came where we prioritize the need for a new park, and it doesn't have to be on budget, because those are all developers' fees that are going to be available for that should that decision ever be made. My concern is keeping our parks up and having the number of personnel we need to do that effectively.
Mr. Berg.
Yeah, I think Alderman person Smith was right on with his comments, and I think Christine has a very difficult task because we keep giving her more to do with less. And so I, increasingly, I, I have a lot of respect for her duties and the difficulty of her job, knowing the, the number of acres, the number of parks. I don't see any provision that's going to make us go out there looking for additional parks. And, and she knows that. She's reminded me of, of her funds that she has to work with, her equipment that needs to be replaced, and the dollars she needs for doing that. We need to find people in philanthropic-type persons that want to give to causes like, and we've already got a large number of them right now that do give to our city for parks and things like that that can benefit and not involve city dollars, tax dollars. But I'm, I'm impressed with the plan. I don't see any provision on, on expanding parks beyond a developer type of request based on a, on a new development that does require some, some park as part of that development, and those dollars will then also allocate playground equipment as part of the developer fee, so that won't impact on, on, on us directly. So I, I compliment her, and I think she does have a difficult task, because when we look at our budget, her, hers budget is one of the ones where we do try to find a dollar to save at her expense.
Mr. Lampy.
Because we are stepping a little bit into speculation, I do want to point out that on page 225 of your packet, or 71 of the plan, we do list three development-oriented parks, Edgefield Subdivision, Reagan Park, and Rock River Ridge Park, which would serve hep heights, the, the to-be-developed area of the Hunter Oaks subdivision, and the incredibly important Rock River Ridge neighborhood, respectively.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, making a lampie for the first. Lampy.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hernett. Wetzel. Mullenhauer. Davis. Passes.
Okay, thank you. Next, F, exhibit 9779, resolution to appoint Alexandra Pentacole Paul as the attorney, sponsored by myself and the Finance Committee. There was an error for her start date. It listed September 17th. That's because Mr. Stevens left July 17th, so that number was there instead of the September 2nd, 3rd start. So just need to kind of rescind the previous one so she can start two weeks earlier.
Move for adoption.
Okay. Mr. Berg. Seconded by Wetzel. Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay.
Berg.
Aye.
Bartz.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hernett.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, next we go on to reports.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, next we go on to reports. Back, so Finance Committee meetings from July seventh, Public Works meetings from July eighth, Licensing Board from July ninth, Board of Health from July fifteenth, Finance Committee from July twenty first, Park Recreation and Forestry from July twenty first, Public Works from July twenty second, Plan Commission July twenty eighth, Public Safety Minutes from August sixth. Mr. Blankie?
So I apologize because this actually related to resolution ninety seven seventy five and say it's been a busy meeting, so. But on the Finance Committee meetings from July seventh, item number four, there's a reference to the TID four increment, that there would be an audit completed in August prior to amendments being made to it. So was the funding for resolution ninety seven seventy five already part of TID four or has that audit been completed?
The audit is underway. It's not completed, and it won't be for another month or so. This is just a request to allocate the money. I made it clear to Mr. Becker that no money would be able to leave until the full title, TID four is audited and approved by this body.
So were we out of order in approving the resolution prior to the audit being completed? Again, I apologize. I had a note to bring this up.
We pass as finance. I mean, we could always change it goes to council.
Dollar amount is not a large one coming out of there. I just want to make sure it's not going to cause any complications when closing out TID four.
Yeah, the money will not be approved to spend at all. I will not move the money until TID four is closed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, move on then. I believe employee recognition, there was nobody here today. Just making sure. Party Department, Party Department monthly report for June. Any question on it? Okay, miscellaneous business payroll summary, July twenty-third through August fifth, paid invoices report, July twenty twenty-five, and cash investments, July thirty-first. Licenses? License memo to the council. Review and take action, application for a Class B multi-licensure license from ADM two oh seven LLC, DBA Silver Eagle Saloon, Amanda Kostrowski agent, located at two oh seven South Second Street for licensing year July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Any motion? Mr. Lampy?
I would move for the approval of the application, conditional on passing the health and fire inspections as outlined in the memo.
Okay, motion by Lampy, seconded by Barts. Okay. I don't think we need a, okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? C, review and take action, agent change application for Silver Creek Investors LLC, DBA Watertown Country Club at thirteen forty North Water Street from Dan Rayfeld to Brent Regis.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Barts, seconded by Molenhour. Any discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. D, review and take action, application for operator's license from Jerika D. Heno Jasa?
Make a motion to deny, based on category one.
Okay. Motion by Blankie for denial, seconded by Lampy. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Ordnances, twenty-five dash nineteen, amend chapter five fifty, official zoning map of the city of Watertown through the rezoning of two thirteen South First Street, parcel number two nine one zero eight one five zero four two one one six one for multifamily residential, MR eight, zoning district to central business, CB zoning district classifications sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission on its second reading.
Move ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen.
Okay. Motion by Blankie, seconded by Berg. Okay, we need a real call.
Blankie? Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coe. Thank you, Chris. Ordnance twenty-five dash twenty, amend chapter five fifty, official zoning map of the city of Watertown through the rezoning parcel number two nine one zero eight one five zero eight three two zero zero five from a planned office institutional zoning district to planned industrial zoning district classifications sponsored by myself and the Plan Commission on its second reading. Motion by Wetzel? Second? Seconded by Blankie. Okay.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay. Next ordinance twenty-five dash two one, amend section four twenty-eight dash eleven of the city of Watertown general ordinances sponsored by Elder Davis from the Public Safety and Welfare Committee on its second reading.
I'll move for ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Motion by Davis, seconded by Molenhour.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhour?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay, next ordinance twenty-five dash two-two, ordinance to create section four twenty-eight dash one, re-vest the city of Watertown general ordinance is sponsored by Elder Davis from Public Safety and Welfare Committee on its first reading.
I recuse myself from this one.
Okay. Alderman Lampy is recusing.
I'll also move.
Motion by Molenhour?
Second.
Seconded by Berg. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Stevens?
Molenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay. Thank you. Resolutions are complete, so go to new business. Yeah. Commending a closed session per nineteen point eight five to confer legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, claim for advanced piping.
Motion for closed session.
Okay, motion by Barts. Second? Seconded by Blankie. Okay.
Barts?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhour?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Recording stopped.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Smith?
I'd make a motion that we deny the claim.
Okay, got motion to deny? Seconded by Molenhour. Any discussion? Okay.
Voice vote should be acceptable.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, last we have comments and suggestions from citizens present.
Dr. Chris Ross.
Chris Ross, four three two West Clover Lane Cottage Grove. The longer we leave shelter procedures untouched, the less responsive we show ourselves to those who died last winter. Don't let providing for an overnight warming shelter be the most important decision you failed to make. Romans, chapter fifteen, verse twenty-six says, "For Macedonia and Icaea have been pleased to share their resources with the poor among the saints at Jerusalem." Second Corinthians, chapter eight, verse nine says, "For you know the generous act of our Lord Jesus Christ, that though he was rich, yet for your sakes he became poor, so that by his poverty you might become rich." Second Corinthians, chapter nine, verse seven says, "Each of you must give as you have made up your mind, not reluctantly, for God loves a cheerful giver." Galatians, chapter two, verse ten says, "They asked only one thing, that we remember the poor, which I was, which was actually what I was eager to do." Galatians, chapter six, verse two says, "Bear one another's burdens, and in this way you will fulfill the law of Christ." Ephesians, chapter four, verse twenty-eight says, "Thieves must give up stealing, rather let them labor and work honestly with their own hands, so as to have something to share with the needy." Philippians, chapter two, verse four says, "Let each of you look not to your own interests, but to the interests of others." Colossians, chapter three, verse eleven says, "In that renewal there is no longer Greek and Jew, circumcised and uncircumcised, barbarian, scythian, slave and free, but Christ is all and in all." First Timothy, chapter six, verses seventeen and eighteen say, "As for those who in the present age are rich, command them not to be haughty or to set their hopes on the uncertainty of riches, but rather on God, who richly provides us with everything for our enjoyment. They are to do good, to be rich in good works, generous, and ready to share." Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verses one through three say, "Let mutual love continue; do not neglect to show hospitality to strangers, for by doing that some have entertained angels without knowing it. Remember those who are in prison, as though you were in prison with them; those who are being tortured, as though you yourselves were being tortured." Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse sixteen says, "Do not neglect to do good and to share what you have, for such sacrifices are pleasing to God." James, chapter one, verse twenty-seven says, "Religion that is pure and undefiled before God the Father is this, to care for orphans and widows in their distress, and to keep oneself unstained by the world." James, chapter two, verses two through four say, "For if a person with gold rings and in fine clothes comes into your assembly, and if a poor person in dirty clothes also comes in, and if you take notice of the one wearing the fine clothes and say, 'Have a seat here, please,' while the one who is poor you say, 'Stand there or sit at my feet,' have you made distinctions among yourselves and become judges with evil thoughts?"
Is that it, Mark? Yeah, okay. I entertain a motion for adjournment then. Motion? Seconded by Smith. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Thank you. Nine fifty-one.
Recording stopped. [music] 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 [music]